Over here on my desk. So with that, let's go ahead and call the order. The April 19th, 2021 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. Would everyone please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Okay, Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Tice?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Weggie?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Here.
All members are present.
Great, thank you. We're going to blow right through this agenda as we have no announcements, appointments, or proclamations or recognitions under Item 3, nor do we have any public hearing under Item 4, which brings us to Item 5. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Alderman Gould?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to put forward a motion to remove Item 9F from the consent agenda and move it to new business discussion. That would be the resolution approving a permit for Brentwood School District for curb cuts.
I'll second that motion. Who seconded that?
David.
Plufka? Okay. Well, we don't need a motion for it currently. I'm assuming that you've got questions you want to take this up?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
You know, it's a big enough issue that we should probably have it taken out of consent agenda so we can get through consent agenda and then take this issue up separately.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we'll go ahead and move that over to new business. That will be Item 11C then. And I'm sure Kelly will make the changes and it should repopulate on your board docs. Any other changes or modifications? I think I saw Alderman Tice's hand up.
I was going to do this and ask for the same thing.
Ah, okay, great. So any other changes? Alderwoman O'Neal, were you the same way? Okay. Seeing no other changes, any objection to approving the agenda as modified? Alderwoman Sims?
Sorry, I was just hitting my screen to repopulate. I have no question.
Okay, all right. Any objection to approving the agenda as modified by removing Item F Resolution Number 1285? Seeing no objection, the agenda will be approved by acclamation, which brings us down to the next item, citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes. And Kelly, if you would, help me out.
Karen Smith would like to address.
Okay, Karen, hopefully you have the floor. If we don't hear you, we'll let you know.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So I am a resident commenting on the curb cut on high school to account for an exit for the new McGrath School. I just want to make a comment that that stretch along high school already has a lot of traffic. Both high school and Harrison serve as cut-throughs. And so you have a lot of cars coming over from Manchester trying to cut through, and even they come up Litzinger Road from west and oftentimes cut through to avoid the light at Litzinger and also to kind of work their way over to Brentwood Square and ultimately to Highway 40. Many of the cars are traveling fast. There are a lot of pedestrians that are walking through that area. You have people like myself that walk through that area regularly. You also have a lot of kids between the grade school at McGrath, the high school and middle school. You have a lot of kids moving up and down high school. And then there is a pedestrian walk at Harrison and High School, but it is not observed. Cars don't ever stop. So it's a busy corner as it is even without that curb cut. With the additional cars and congestion that we would expect to see with the school and their curb cut, ideally, we'd not have a curb cut, but I understand that they've already approved their plan. So I'm not sure if there's any option for not putting in a curb cut. If we have to have a curb cut, I would love to see some traffic calming, whether we have a four-way stop sign there so that the cars have to stop. A more prominent pedestrian crosswalk, having those kind of speed bumps because the way the topography moved through that area at high school, I'm sorry, at Litzinger, the road goes down and then goes back up again to White. And so cars going south on high school or north on high school do pick up speed. And so I don't know if we could put speed bumps in there. It is an already congested corner at Harrison and Brentwood. I would imagine we're going to see more cars moving down Harrison with that curb cut. And so I'm expecting that we're going to have even more congestion at Harrison and Brentwood as well. So no notices were sent out to residents for the P&amp;Z meeting where this was discussed. Not sure about the reach of that list that was shared with me. There were a lot of people on that list that don't live in the immediate area that will be impacted by that curb cut. And although there were some notices sent to some of the neighbors in this area, it was not a very wide list compared to the number that were on that list with the percentage and coming from this area was low compared to the total list. And of my neighbors that I talked to, most did not remember, do not, did not remember, thought they might have received it. One neighbor thought they might have received it. So not real sure whether our little area of Brentwood was engaged. I do see this as a pretty big impact for our area. So just make that all known and appreciate your help and support in getting some better traffic calming in that area. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen, for your comments. Kelly, do we have anybody else that cares to address the board?
We have no other hands raised at this point.
Okay. If you care, you'll have another opportunity later on the movie, in the meeting, to address the board. That moves us on to the mayor and alderman reports. First up is my report. Just a few things. As you know, we had an election back two weeks ago tomorrow. And the results are going to be certified. And so we're going to have the swearing in of all the officials at the next meeting, May 3rd, at which point we will be swearing in also a new alderman or alderperson, and that's Jack Shelton. Congratulations to him in his victory and welcome to the board in two weeks from, I guess, maybe three weeks from tonight, whatever May 3rd is. And just a few things coming up on the schedule. And I did post this out on social media. So next Thursday, as I've mentioned previously, we are going to be resuming the coffees with the mayor in person. And I was up at the polling place on Election Day, and I had a number of residents who normally do attend the coffee with the mayor, and they were saying they really do want to get those things back. And they feel like we can do it safely. I agree with them. Again, I was going to do it back in March, but because of other reasons, I decided to postpone it until this month. So next Thursday, we will be resuming coffee with the mayor over at the rec center. And still going to talk to Eric about how best to do that location. We might do it outdoors, weather permitting. But I have assured them that donuts will be provided and coffee, as is in the past. And then two days after that, May 1st, we're having our community shredding event. A few days after that, we are having the Board of Aldermen meeting on May 3rd. Again, we will be swearing in all the elected officials, all the people who prevailed on the election. And then finally, I believe the next thing is that following Saturday, May 8th, is the, hopefully what will become an annual event. That's Mayor's for Meals. We did it last year. And of all the communities that participated, and I'm talking about Clayton, Creve Court, DePere, Richmond Heights, Maplewood, you name it, there were a bunch of us that participated. And we collected the second most food stuff items, personal items, and they do it by weight. So we're going to be trying to blast this out. The only difference is that this year compared to last year is they're only doing it for just a few hours. It's going to be over by noon. Instead of last year, it went to at least two, maybe three o'clock in the afternoon. So we want to get the word out. It's a tremendous cause. It's really, really important that we do this. And in order to elevate us in relation to the others, I would encourage you to go buy canned items because those are heavy. And those are the things that they're judging us on is weight, tonnage, not mass. So go buy a lot of those canned food items. No, in all seriousness, anything that you get, there's a list out there. And Janet has already done a great job of blasting this information out. And hopefully, we'll get a terrific turnout because it is such an important cause. Alderman Plufka?
No report.
Alderwoman Tice?
One quick thing. I know I noticed quite a few residents on the meeting today, and I know many of them are from Ward 1. So just wanted to let folks know that May 11th will be a Ward 1 meeting. So it's a few weeks out, but since there are people at the meeting today, I'll let you know. We'll announce it again next time.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sims?
Ways and Means will be continuing their discussion and analysis of the compensation report at an additional special meeting on April 27th at 5:30.
Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, just like to recognize that the Hamley Dog Park has the new decomposed granite on it. The feedback has been very positive from all the residents I've seen down there, and we'll see how it handles the next couple of days worth of rain. And then from a Public Works, this is still hot off the presses, but we will probably be scheduling a special pop-up meeting to look at something that is very time-sensitive so we have time to get it in front of the board. So we've got a killer deal on a trash truck maybe we can look at. So heads up on that. I'll be reaching out to the Public Works Committee to try and get that scheduled soon. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gould?
How can I follow up a killer deal on a trash truck? The, since there's also other members in the audience here, I thank you for our Ward 3 meeting participation last time. Our next Ward 3 meeting is scheduled for May 25th, Tuesday, May 25th at 7:00 PM. Obviously, I'll be noting that in the upcoming meetings as well. Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Lockmiller?
The Safety Committee will meet virtually next Wednesday, April 28th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Ebling?
No report.
And Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes, just from the library that it is open. Spread the word. It's 10 people at a time, but it's a steady stream of people. So they're not reaching the limit by any means. And so a small family or whoever can go and spend half an hour and take advantage of it being open.
That is great news. Thank you. Brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the City Administrator Report. First up is the Brentwood Bound update. Craig?
Evening. Craig Schlotter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update. So since the last meeting in regards to the construction cost category, total spend was $661,754.14. Next is soft costs. Total spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting was $41,338.17 that was spent on surveying Manchester Road improvements and event lawn comfort station design and engineering, real estate appraisal, legal fees, and environmental surveys. Next is property acquisitions. There was one property acquisition done in regards to easement and a fee acquisition, and that was $34,134. In regards to the funding sources at the bottom of my update, you'll notice that since you all approved the latest MSD Amendment, that amendment included a new estimated price that MSD will be paying Brentwood to do that work for. So that amount was updated to match that amendment that was approved. And besides that, there were no other updates.
Any questions for Craig about the Brentwood Bound update? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Craig. Next up, we have, I guess Eric is taking this update on the 2021 Brentwood Days?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just was giving a quick update on Brentwood Days that we discussed this at our last Public Works meeting. And the report I gave at that meeting touched on the fact that St. Louis County has published event planning guidelines, which consists of all the lists of questions that basically are intended to be a starting point for plans created during this time. And some of the questions include things like where are your spacing considerations to ensure social distancing? How you conduct COVID-19 house screenings? How are you going to enforce masking for participants and attendees? What is your plan for distribution of food and beverages with requirement of individual contained beverages and prepackaged prepared foods? And so obviously, that brought up a lot of questions for staff. We fully hope and expect, I think hope and expect are the two words, that these requirements will hopefully lessen a little bit and that we'll be able to, we'll have different requirements and might not be as strict. But I think we all thought that, I think the Public Works Committee agreed, that there will still be some sort of restrictions by St. Louis County during Brentwood Days. So we basically wanted to discuss a couple of options that we thought might be prudent moving forward. And the first was just move ahead normally with Brentwood Days. Just go out full force, start booking everything, getting everything booked, but then realize that in the event that there are still some strict guidelines in September, we might have to make some radical changes. And also, that would be probably cost prohibitive at this point. The second was maybe a more socially-distanced Brentwood Days where we reduce the number of carnival rides, reduce the vendor tents, things like that. Try to make it a little bit, spread it out a little bit more and see what we could do there. And the last was maybe doing a smaller type community event, kind of in the feel of Light Up the Fall that we've done a couple of years ago when Brentwood Days was rained out. And the idea is maybe if it's smaller, then we only really focus on the Brentwood community. We don't get all the regional guests that we get for Brentwood Days. We still, the Public Works Committee still was wanting to make sure we worked on something with a parade and definitely have fireworks. And so after the discussion, the Public Works Committee recommended, moving forth, Option 3, incorporating the parade and the fireworks.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Bola, I'm going to be looking to you. Do we need some action by the board to make a decision on that at this point in time?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay. So I understand this is very disappointing, but I also understand that we don't have that crystal ball. We don't know what the county is going to permit us to do in September. Moreover, we don't know what the people who attend any Brentwood Days would be comfortable doing. And with all that uncertainty, I think Eric's and Public Works Committee's recommendation is probably the more prudent route to go in the grand scheme of things, folks. You know, Eric's tried to come up with the best alternative. And so I would hope that the board would support that option number 3. Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, so I would make the motion to accept the option number 3 and follow the guidance given by Parks and Rec to move forward.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Weggie. I heard a second by Alderwoman Tice. Any further discussion on that? Can we just do a voice vote, or do we need a roll call, Bola?
Voice vote.
A voice vote, okay. That's even better. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, everyone. And that concludes our City Administrator Report.
We have one more item.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Bola.
I see one more item on that.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was trying to cut out Jason. I'm guessing Jason's handling this, is that right?
Yes, he is, and he's online.
I am terribly sorry, Jason.
That's quite all right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
All right. Well, this is an item that I had initially brought to the Ways and Means Committee. Basically, I just wanted to make the board aware of two matters. The first being that the rate increase for our premiums for our health insurance has come in for the 2021-2022 plan year. In years past, we've been fortunate and only had a 2% rate increase. Unfortunately, this year, we're looking at approximately 4.5%. The total impact to the city is $29,375.35 based upon our April census, of which I should point out the employees pick up the portion that equates to approximately 82-89-72. In the past, what we have always done is passed along the rate increase in terms of the employee portion to those individuals that have additional coverage, i.e. spouse, old children, or family coverage. On the memo that I included, I did put that information there. The Ways and Means asked to kick it forward to the full board. I'm more or less just looking for permission from the board to implement this. The implementation date would be July 1st. I also want to point out that in addition to this, and I don't think it was part of this memo, it was a secondary memo, the city is also receiving a payout from Slate from two years that had closed calendar year 2012 and into 13, and then 2013 into 14 for a sum total of approximately $85,130. So that will be added to our budget. And the dollar figure indicated the $30,000 that would be the city's increase for the remainder of calendar year 2021. That is not an unexpected cost. That is part of our budgetary process. And we typically do equate for a 4% to 6% across the board rate increase for all of our benefits premiums. And in future meetings, I'll be bringing the additional rate increases, of which the only one we're going to see an actual increase is our vision benefit, and that's a minimal increase after seven years of no increase.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jason on this? Because it sounds like this does take board action on our part. Anybody care to make a motion? Assuming the motion is to, like in years past, is for the employees just to go ahead and repass on any increase to the employees that they have to pay a proportionate share? Does that sound about right, Bola?
Yes.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Alderman Ebling, seconded by Alderwoman Sims. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Great, thank you. Now with that, we have concluded the City Administrator Report, which brings us to the consent agenda. And because we have removed Item Resolution Number 1285, it looks like we just have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items on the consent agenda. Any questions about any of the remaining items on the consent agenda? Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Alderman Gould, seconded by Alderwoman Sims. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Great, thank you, everybody. All right, that moves us down to Item 10, Old Business. So Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Item 63, Bill Number 6321, by title only, please?
Bill Number 6321, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri approving a certain easement agreement with by-state development agency of the Missouri Illinois Metropolitan District, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this, Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to perfect Bill Number 6321 in the ordinance form.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Alderman Weggie, seconded by Alderman Plufka. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Bill passes by a vote of eight to zero and will become ordinance number 4961, signed by the mayor.
Great, thank you. Brings us down to Item 11, New Business. We have three items under that. The first is Bill Number 6323. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a reading of, a first read of Bill Number 6323 by title only, please?
I'm sorry, I'm not finding it on the agenda.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay.
What I have is 6324. Oh, that's just misnumbered, I'm sorry. Bill Number 6323, first reading and ordinance adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances of the City of Brentwood, establishing the same, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein except as herein expressly provided, providing for the manner of amending such code of ordinances, providing penalty for the violation thereof, and providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Great, thank you. Okay, presenting on this, who's doing this, Bola? I can't hear you.
I can do it.
Okay, Kevin will do it.
This is the periodic updating of the city's code in response to the changes in Missouri law, passage of ordinances by the city. The publisher that publishes our code updates it with the ordinances we send and discussions we have concerning editorial changes from time to time. And this is probably annually, I expect, we do this. And we're going to do it again this year.
Okay, great.
This is essentially taking ordinances that the Board of Aldermen has passed during the past year and slotting them into the code. So we view it as a housekeeping measure.
Okay, great. And we're just doing a first reading on this, it looks like?
Doesn't matter.
Yes, we are. But if the board would entertain the first and second reading unless you feel that you need to defer it to the next meeting.
I can't see any reason to have a staggered reading on this. That's hardly controversial. But, you know, we'll leave that up to the board. So, folks, if we could get a motion for a second read of Bill Number 6323.
So move.
Okay. We've got a motion and seconded by a whole bunch of folks. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a reading of bill, second read of bill number 6323 by title only, please?
Bill number 6323, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances of the city of Brentwood, establishing the same, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, except as herein expressly provided, providing for the manner of amending such code of ordinances, providing penalty for the violation thereof, and providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Great. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect bill number 6323 into ordinance form.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to perfect into ordinance form. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes by a vote of eight to zero and will become ordinance number 4961, when signed by the mayor.
Great, thank you. All right, next up is item 11B, bill number 6324. Can we get a first reading of bill 6324 by title only, please?
Bill number 6324, first reading and ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri approving a certain real estate sale contract with Maurice Enterprises LLC for the acquisition of certain property interests in a property at 8702 Manchester Road, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, and containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Mark, are you taking this one?
I believe so. This is the sale contract between the city and Maurice Enterprises. This is the contract that accounts for the city acquiring a little bit of sliver of land in fee, and also temporary construction use, but necessary to do work to reconnect the parking lot to Mary Avenue as part of our Rowan Bound project.
In fee, could you explain what that means?
Sure, we're going to actually, there's, we're going to do a boundary adjustment plat where we're going to take a, looks like a backwards capital L of their current property that Maurice Enterprises owns, that is essentially Mary Avenue and the southernmost part of their property, where it meets up with the city's existing property on Mary Avenue, and through that boundary adjustment plat, we'll acquire a title to that backwards capital L as owners of that, not just an easement, and...
So the fee is absolute ownership. Looks like what we are wanting to do is have a first and second read on this matter, is that correct, Mark?
That's correct, and the reason is, we've been kind of going around with this one for a while, and just kind of want to get this one behind us if we could.
All right, so that's the justification for not staggering this particular bill. So with that, you get a motion for a second read of bill 6324.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and we'll leave that up to Kelly to figure out who it was. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a reading of bill 6324 by title only, please?
Bill number 6324, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri approving a certain real estate sale contract with Maurice Enterprises LLC for the acquisition of certain property interests in a property at 8702 Manchester Road, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, and containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect bill number 6324 into ordinance form.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Lockmiller, seconded by Alderman Sims. Any further discussion? Alderman Gould?
Yes, Mark, can you just clarify one thing for me? The blue on the chart that has the blue kind of shaded area, is, so is that entrance of Mary Avenue now going to be their entrance for their property? And then, if so, is that just to the, I guess, east of where the tunnel comes out? I guess I'm just trying to get a clarity on where that is.
Yes, let me scroll down to that page here. Okay, so the blue on that page there, the blue is going to be acquired by MODAT as part of their project, and that will, they'll have an easement over that, and that's going to be essentially combined with the part of Mary Avenue that is to the, to the east of the blue, that will be their access to their rear parking lot from Manchester. Essentially, that part's not going to change much for them, the tunnel's going to be just a little bit east of that area itself.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just, so where the current sort of buildings are, the tunnel will come out.
Yeah, if you kind of think about that, it's kind of pointing directly at that small apartment building, which will be going away.
Okay, and then is that black, are there, is there going to be some fencing along there? I'm assuming, and maybe Craig can answer this, and I'm, I guess, just for safety of cars coming and going next to the tunnel, pedestrian tunnel, I was curious.
Craig, if you're still with us, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here. I can't see the document out, and I can't pull that up. Jeff, do you have that pulled up on your computer? Can you share the screen, and I can speak more specifically about that?
Yeah, give me one sec.
Greg, this would be the, I guess, the question is there separation of some sort between the eastern edge of Mary Avenue and where the tunnel's going to come up?
Yeah, there will need to be some sort of barrier, just because of the great differences from the road and the tunnel coming up from below that. So I don't know whether it's, I would imagine it's more of like a guardrail system, but I can follow up with the design team and see exactly what, whether it's a heavy-duty fencing with a guardrail, or if it's just a guardrail, that's more of a vehicular barrier. Okay, there'll be something there, Jeff, and I can, I'm sorry, Alderman Gould, and I can follow up and get back to you specifically.
Wonderful, yeah, I just, you know, with cars turning off of Manchester, I'd hate for anybody to lose control and then go into the pedestrian walk there. Sure. So, great, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Gould?
Nope.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I think we had a motion to perfect. With that, no further discussion, as I see. Okay, can we get a roll call, please, Kelly?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes by a vote of eight to zero, and will become ordinance 4962 when the mayor signs.
Great, thank you, everybody. That brings us to the last item under New Business, and that's resolution 1285. I guess Lisa, I'm assuming you're going to handle this for us?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. So there is a resolution before you tonight to approve a curb cut and do some additional right-of-way work along the perimeters of the McGrath School Site property. So this is very similar, this process. Some of you may remember back in 2015, the Brentwood School District had approached the Board of Aldermen about changing the traffic circulation of the McGrath Elementary School Site, and that curb cut was approved by the board. Actually, it was a curb cut that also would provide access on the High School Drive, but those improvement plans were never completed by the Brentwood School District. Then fast forward, I guess, to 2019, again, this is the process we followed when the work was going to be done at the middle and the high school site, and again, there were modifications made to existing curb cuts, and a few changes to the access to local streets. So once again, we brought that before the board for approval. One thing, though, that I would probably like to emphasize is that, if you're not aware, school districts in the state and in most states are somewhat autonomous in terms of when they plan and construct their school facilities. So for instance, in the projects I mentioned before, and now this work at the McGrath School Site, so for instance, there isn't a formal site plan approval process as part of this, there won't be construction drawings that will be submitted to the city for review, and we also won't be completing building inspections out on site, those are done by third-party reviewers. So I just wanted you to kind of get a feel for the limitations and the approval authority for the city when it comes to school facilities. Nonetheless, I think it was already probably back in January, when staff started to meet with representatives of the school district and their team, and I can see that many are connected here this evening, should we need to refer to some of the team members. But we worked with the Brentwood School District and their team, looking at their first original concept plan, and right-of-way staff's take on it was, much again like the other two projects previously, that we thought it would be very advisable for a traffic study to be completed. So we contacted Lee Cannon with CBB to do the traffic, complete the traffic report or the traffic analysis. So actually, with the findings of that traffic report, which was actually loaded onto the Planning and Zoning Commission site, as well as to your board docs tonight, that traffic study, the Brentwood School District and the team really rolled through a lot of those findings and actually incorporated a lot of the findings in that traffic report and revised their plans. So the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this site plan and the access management at their meeting last Wednesday on April 14th. So again, it wasn't an official site plan submitted, that really isn't part of the process, but the school district has been also very supportive, that we try to get as much public input, or at least public awareness at this stage, as to what the plans for the school project really are. So with that, we went ahead and still kind of just followed our notification procedures. So there were actually 117 notices that were sent out to residents in the immediate area under the notification requirements we generally, we always follow. And so we had the meeting last week with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so they had comments as well, and the plans were, once again, changed slightly, and that was revised and given back to staff today, and so that was loaded onto board docs as well. So really, I'll probably leave the specifics more to the school district's team, and also Lee Cannon is connected here tonight, if you have questions for him. But I guess I just want to emphasize that, again, our role is somewhat limited, this is going to be a three-year project, and so I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities along the way, that as things evolve and, or maybe modify so forth, that we can look at. I think we're going to continue to have meetings, really good meetings with the Brentwood School District, and just again, as things evolve, that we'll try, you know, to meet and actually keep working on solutions, whether they're related to traffic, construction site questions, or what have you. So I could go just take another minute or two and kind of go through the general scope of the plans for the facilities, or Mayor, if you would like to go ahead and ask someone from the team, that would be fine, so.
Yeah, why don't we do the latter, Lisa, and just kind of focus in on what some of the concerns are? If any, I see Alderman Lockmiller has his hand up, and then Alderman Tice.
Lisa, it would constantly crash on me, but the changes you're talking about, the site distance that were on the document and red, could you kind of go over those real quick? Because I couldn't watch it for a long period of time without it crashing on me.
Yeah, since that is, that was just given to us today, Paul Boyer from CDC has connected, so I think maybe I'll just refer to him to just go over those changes from last Wednesday, if I could.
Paul, this one's yours, if you can.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Lisa did a good introduction, I'm the civil engineer for the project, and what we had done was a site distance analysis, and this was based on Lee Cannon's recommendation. So Lee had done a report for this development, for the access onto High School Drive across from Harrison Avenue, and one of the, one of the recommendations or stipulations was to review the site distance at that intersection. So what you see in red, what we had submitted today is, we had, if you're, I'm sure you're all familiar with along High School Drive, there's angled parking on the west side of High School Drive. With the new proposed access on the High School Drive, the site distance was limited for through movements and left-turning movements because of any parked vehicles in the angled parking area. So what we did is we converted a number of the angled parking spaces to parallel parking spaces. The site distance requirements are really a St. Louis County, it's a St. Louis County requirements based on the speed limit on the street, so the speed limit on High School Drive is 20 miles per hour. Requirements typically, you go five miles over for design speed, so we ran it at 25 miles per hour, so it's really just that you punch in the speed limit, and it kicks out the required site distance, and so you make sure that you meet those side distance requirements. Additionally, at that intersection, we're also realigning the crosswalk with our new entrance as well. And then one of the other last requirements that we've done, again, it was a recommendation with, by Lee, was to install a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, that's for pedestrians crossing the street, so it'll be a solar-powered, RFB is the acronym for it, but we would do it, install that at the intersection as well, so it would indicate flashing lights when pedestrians are crossing that new crosswalk area.
And then would there be another one located just on the other side of, by Harrison and High School, another crosswalk indicator?
It typically, well, I'll let Lee, we were going to do it based on the recommendation of Lee, so we have it on the, we have it on one side, on the west side of the street, but I may defer to Lee if one is going to be required also on the opposite side.
Lee, can you weigh in on that?
Well, everyone, for the record, my name's Lee Cannon, I'm a principal with CBB, and I completed the traffic engineering study for the, for the site. Just to clarify, so everybody understands, I am working on-call for the city, so I am your traffic engineer. I've coordinated with the developer, the school district and their civil engineers to try to assist them in getting a project that is safe and efficient. So generally speaking, I would like to minimize the number of unsignalized or uncontrolled crossings, and I believe that the south side of the driveway, of the south leg of High School is the most appropriate. I would, I would suggest that you not have a crossing of the north side. If you do, then we should talk about changing the control, because we can't have two rectangular flashing systems, you know, one on each side of an intersection, so we would need to do something else.
Lee, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I guess my question was, across the street, so it would be on the east side of High School, there would be another push-button-activated signal crossing?
Oh, so the crossing will be the south leg of High School, and if they go with the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, there would be a push button on both the southeast corner and the southwest corner to activate that.
Yes, okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, I think Alderman Tice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few traffic questions. So I think this is probably for Lee, the cars exiting out the east end of the property that will now go onto High School, so you're allowing, or you're recommending that they go, they can go both north straight onto Harrison and then south onto High School?
Yes.
And is there, do you feel like the neighborhood can accommodate that kind of traffic? I mean, like, and the ones going straight to Harrison, I mean, they certainly can't, if they get to the end of Harrison, it's, it would be virtually impossible for them to turn left onto Rowan Boulevard. Are you, I mean, does that just work itself out over time, or what are your, how do you recommend managing that?
Well, the way that I looked at the system was the fact that, you know, Brentwood has had a school in this location for a long time, and there's obvious congestion during arrival and dismissal at this school and the others. That congestion is really a high peak and a short duration, and as you may know, today on St. Clair Avenue, it's all kind of packed in at the same location. The driveway on St. Clair is very close to Litzinger, and they only are allowing right out of the school during peak times, and the reason for that is, if you allow those exiting cars to go back to St. Clair and Litzinger, we would have the queues overlapping and exacerbating each other. So traffic comes from all over Brentwood to the school site today and filters through this neighborhood. If people are going to and from the school today and not using the traffic signals to get on to Brentwood Boulevard or to McKnight, they're doing that today. So I think a lot of that will remain as is. With the current plan, it's important to understand, the school district is going to have in-only all the time via St. Clair, and out-only all the time via High School. So while there will be more traffic on High School directly than there was before, the school traffic will be spread out geographically and won't negatively impact one location with all of the traffic. So yes, there may be some traffic that uses local streets, but I believe in general terms that that traffic's already there. If it was a concern, you know, it could be posted that traffic's not allowed to go straight across the intersection. that traffic's not allowed to go straight across the intersection. That might be a little bit more difficult in practice to physically restrict. But that's a possibility if it is a significant concern to the city. I don't find it to be a significant concern specifically. But aligning the proposed exit opposite the city street is the appropriate thing to do from an intersection alignment. Allowing that traffic to go down that specific local street is a question that could be investigated further if you think need be.
That's helpful. Thank you. And so then my next question, I'm not quite sure who to address this to, is about the construction parking. So I wasn't able to attend the P and Z meeting, but listened to it. And I believe I understand that the construction traffic is to park in the parking along High School Drive between the new exit of the school property up to Litzinger. And so now in the new plan today, some of those are parallel. So where are all those? It sounded like in the R F, from the P and Z meeting, that whoever gets this bid would have to ensure that construction parking is off-site. But that has been a big complaint from neighbors during the high school and middle school construction. And I'd like to sort of put that out now to make sure that that's handled so we don't continue to get complaints from neighbors for this construction.
Once, one clarification, the proposed change that parking is for the ultimate condition. And it's for uncontrolled traffic from the school, being able to just drive out of the exit and onto High School Drive, look both ways, and turn on to the roadway. During construction, they wouldn't necessarily have to implement this change in the parking immediately. But if they don't have site distance and they want to drive out of that location, generally using it as a, as a construction driveway exit, then they would be required to flag traffic if they, if those cars cannot adequately see to the north and south along High School Drive.
So I guess my question, though, is, is there adequate parking there for the number of construction trucks that will be working? So the construction trucks aren't parking on all the residential streets? Because that's been an issue with the high school and middle school construction.
The answer to that would be that, as traffic engineer, we didn't investigate parking-specific numbers because we don't understand how many people may ultimately be on-site per the contractor. However, in order to protect the city, it would make sense to put conditions on the approval during construction of maybe where they can't park on, on the public streets, if there is that concern.
Was this, did I miss, I sort of thought I heard at P and Z that they were going to do something about having construction trucks off-site. I just wanted to clarify that that's the case. So this is a long.
Yeah, Lisa can weigh in.
Yeah.
I could add a little bit more to that. Yeah, I don't want to be, I don't want to appear too vague. But I guess, again, I have to, the way I would look at this project, is it is going to be a longer duration again. It's a major project, and there's three different scenarios we're trying to plan for. So one is just again, for when the new school is going to be built. And then the McGrath kids are still operating out of the existing McGrath school. Then we've got scenario two, where new school is done. McGrath kids go over and get acquainted with their new school. And then we've got the Mark Twain kids that will be coming over to the existing McGrath school. And then, as Lee said, the third scenario is when everything kind of goes back to normal and what is just the optimum picture, you know, post all the construction and the remodeling. So again, I don't mean to be vague, but I think they're, just what we've learned from the middle and high school project, it may start out on this construction job and it might go for, and I'm just kind of putting numbers out here, but it may go for six to eight months where you've really only got, you know, a handful of construction workers that are on-site. And then it's going to, you know, depend on what a phase of construction they're under and, you know, how many more contractors that they have. So my hope would be is that we have more ongoing dialogue throughout this project. And what I like about how this is set up now is that we are seeing construction phases. And we're getting a really good picture of when this project through a couple of years is going to move into the next phase. So I guess I would just encourage that the school district and staff keep meeting on these because I think we're going to have to accommodate different scenarios as we go along. And it's almost impossible, you know, to really try, I think, to think through all scenarios and catch all things at this point. So again, I guess I would just look for ongoing dialogue and that we all have to be problem solvers as this whole project continues.
Yeah, I'm very, I'm comfortable with that. But I just hope that that cooperation will continue because we have had so many complaints from the high school, middle school construction. And sort of along that line, the parking, the year that both schools are there for the staff who are working in the buildings. I noticed the recommendation to not bring the elementary, or the preschool kids over, and staff over. But that would also be a time that I feel like would be of concern to the surrounding streets. So if the dialogue remains open, I am, you know, I'm comfortable with that.
And I guess you did hear correctly. I mean, we did talk a little bit about what type of off-site parking facilities might be available to them, you know, as the contractors run site. And we mentioned a couple of off-site. But again, I don't think that's been locked in, but I think those opportunities exist.
If I could just interrupt, Brent Higgins has logged in, and I believe he's the architect. And he might have some information on this, this issue, Alderman Tice.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So yeah, my name's Brent Higgins. I am with the Architect, H D K Architects. So I'm here on behalf of the school district tonight. I can speak a little bit more to the construction parking. So during construction, we do have some areas set aside within the site, within the bounds of the site that the contractors can park within. There will be times when there's more people on-site and less times when there's not as many people. So it's kind of a precautionary. We do have some additional parking that we kind of showed on our site logistics plan that I believe you got in your packet as well. So those show those angled spots that are right there off of High School Drive. If there is a peak demand and we do need additional parking, we actually did go ahead and write in our project specifications for the project that the contractor will be required to find additional parking that they can lease during those times.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Continue.
Do you have anything more, Brent? Or I have one more question, but if you.
Oh, no, you can go ahead. That was it on the construction portion.
Thank you. And then the last question is for Lisa. And I know it's not really germane right now, but we spent a lot of time in the last year and a half dealing with water runoff from homes and like adding 200 square feet to a lot. And then you have to do a B M P and do all this stuff. And I know we don't really have oversight, but this is paving and putting, building on what used to be a green space. And those homes on Stratford that back up to the now field are now going to have complete pavement. And there's a little berm that comes up, but, you know, the school property goes down. And then they're driving, most, several of them have driveways that go down below their homes and through the alleyway. So what's being done to accommodate water runoff for this project?
So they will have to complete a permit process through M S D, given the size of the parcel. But I think in order to maybe get a little bit better understanding of the general principles of stormwater, again, I'm going to refer to Mr. Boyer, the engineer, because he's already taken a look into this.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, thanks. Yes, we did, in the very beginning, we did a conceptual submit to M S D. This area is, does have known downstream surcharge problems in the sewers. M S D came back and they're requiring us to put onsite detention on this site. And they actually were even more restrictive where they, we were not allowed any credit for the existing impervious areas. We're required to provide onsite detention and detain water as if this site is completely undeveloped. So everything that we're adding and the concerns as far as the parking lot, nothing's going to be, nothing impervious is going to be she-training onto the, any neighboring property. So we're collecting all of it and pumping it to an underground detention base. And we have nearly 1,800 linear feet of 60-inch corrugated metal pipe that's going to be wrapped around a portion of the building. So we're detaining and holding that water and then releasing it as if the site were completely undeveloped. So we have gone through, we did a conceptual review with M S D. And then we've also done our first review with M S D. So they, we are in the midst of the review process with them. But the runoff release rate will be that of a completely undeveloped site. So it would be, it would definitely be an improvement. So for instance, right now, the existing site just discharges directly into the, it's a combined sewer system. So there's no detaining whatsoever. So the new site will provide a detention base and again, collecting all the stormwater and detaining it.
Great. That's, that's great news. Thank you. And this is a really exciting project for Brentwood. And thank you all for entertaining my questions. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Alderman Gould.
Yes, thank you. My questions pertain to the curb cut specifically. I'm sure I have many more questions that I can take up with the board, the school board itself. But I wanted to kind of discuss more of the curb cut itself and the notion that, Lee, you had mentioned that there could be some continued investigation on whether or not to restrict traffic flow to the right or to the left or no straight through to Harrison. And I think that we need to continue to have that, that investigation. I'd love to hear the perspective on, on, it seems to me that we would want to lessen the impact on our residential streets, knowing that we have another, the high school and middle school there. We all like the community that we have, that has our schools embedded in our neighborhood. So with that, we just expect that there's a certain amount of traffic that we need to accommodate. But it seems to me that if majority thoroughfare is coming from Litzinger Road, we would want to try to funnel traffic back to Litzinger Road as efficiently as possible. And so I'm wondering if a right turn only, you know, you could still have the two lanes of Q lanes for, for the school to minimize any backup onto St. Clair. But as you exit out, I'm wondering if a right turn only to funnel traffic back to Litzinger might be lessen the impact of bleed into our residential streets. At a minimum, I think we definitely need to consider no, no straight through to Harrison. I think that becomes a quarter-mile racetrack for people to try to get to Brentwood Boulevard as fast as they can. And then furthermore, I think we need to consider the crosswalk placement again. I understand the direct, the more direct access and why you would want to put the crosswalk at the southern end of that intersection. But I would consider the crosswalk is actually necessary for our students and residents who are walking to the middle school and high school more so than the, the elementary school, given that there's already a four-way crosswalk at Litzinger and High School, just a few yards away. So I think, you know, the northbound traffic on High School going to the middle school and High School and the northbound pedestrians walking to the middle school and high school need to be able to cross the road safely. And, you know, I'm just curious on, on some of those factors, whether those were considered.
I'd be happy to address some of those. It's important to understand that the residents of the Brentwood School District, especially this elementary school, live, live all over this side of Brentwood, if you will. I think, you know, they're the, they're the western half elementary kids and the Mark Twain or the eastern half or thereabouts. So there are, you know, there are parents that live, you know, north of Litzinger that have to get to and from their homes in some direction. And they'll have to be on some street to be within the box of McKnight, I-64, and Brentwood Boulevard. So definitely, we want to allow folks to go left and right out on the High School. The question about Harrison is, I think it's a valid concern that Harrison is a stop control at Brentwood, and it would be a direct shot to Brentwood where you have White and Litzinger that have traffic signals. But you could also have student, the flip side of that is you could also have parents that live on Harrison Hill, Hilton, Annalee, Patton. And how do those parents, you know, get back to their homes if we restrict their movement? So there's the local question versus the longer trip or the person who lives further from the school. No perfect answer to that question, but that is something to consider when you, when you discuss, you know, limiting the exit movement. Second thing, with relation to the crossing of High School, I just think it makes sense that students that are going north of the site that live west of High School Drive would cross the school's driveway, which will have a marked crosswalk. Students that live south will probably use the sidewalk along the west side of High School Drive and walk towards Litzinger. Students that live towards Brentwood will want to cross High School Drive. And we've placed them on the south leg versus the north leg so that they don't have to cross the school's driveway to get to the, the pad crossing. And then there will be, maintain a pad crossing of Harrison on the east side of High School. So it's a pretty safe arrangement. But if there's strong feelings as to how it should be done differently, definitely could be considered.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, as it relates to the motion at hand, or there's not even a motion, I guess, at the moment. But, you know, the task at hand and whether or not the board approves a curb cut here. If there were some more investigation that needed to be happened, that we felt needed to occur, does that need to be done prior to us approving a curb cut? Or is there still design changes that could be considered, you know, after a curb cut approval has been made in this particular location? I guess is my, my big question.
That's likely a question, an administrative question for Lisa to answer. But the city will be issuing a permit, which is the permission slip, if you will. The board, at this point, is really being asked, conceptually, you know, should the city allow that driveway to occur? And not, to some extent, the site plan also then shows the specific design details of that curb cut. But you, I suppose you could split that up so that the board could say, well, yes, we, we, we will grant the school a curb cut. But before we issue the permit, that permission slip for construction, we want to review the details of that more. It's possible that you could do that?
Okay, that, yeah, thank you. That helps. And I think that would be my recommendation in that, because I don't have any issue with the overall concept of, of having the traffic flow not revert back onto St. Clair, obviously, that we need to exit it. I think it's the details of how that exits, built, I think, is still something that needs to be explored. Thank you.
I do think that the residents of St. Clair will be very happy with this change and only receiving now half of the traffic from the school. You know, and, and when you overlap traffic, you don't get double the congestion. You get more than double, right, if you have them in the same place.
Right. I think, though, the concern is, do we, are we, are we simply moving the problem? Which I, you know, I just want to try to avoid in shifting problems around, try to solve them. Thank you.
Understood.
Alderman O'Neal.
Thank you. At first, this doesn't seem like a word for issue, but it is. When this came up a few years ago, we When this came up a few years ago, we talked about it and high school feeds into Brentwood Forest so that ever since the construction of Highway 40, non-residents have found that High School Drive is a great alternative to Brentwood Boulevard. So especially during rush hour, we have huge amounts of traffic. And it seems that because of all the stop signs all the way north on high school, by the time drivers reach West Swan, they're tired of it. They blow that stop sign, they go down the hill just as quickly as they can. And whether they go on up to Eager or turn on Renwood, we're still dealing with people who are traveling far above 20 miles an hour. 40 is not unusual. And as Alderman Gould presented, having no left turn out of this might help us in that respect. I don't see a traffic calming device on the hill by the tennis courts on high school, but there has to be some way to control the speed of people and the volume coming down that hill. It might not be a problem so much at 10:00 AM, but between 7:30 and 9:30, this, this is a real issue and it's dangerous. And I, I don't have a magic answer, but I certainly hope there's some research done on some way we can modify this.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Ebling.
Yes, I, I think the no left turn would be a good idea for a different reason. You've got the high school there with three stop signs in front of it. One at Moritz, one in the middle of the high school and one at that end of the high school, junior high school. And you have all those buses lining up there every afternoon before school lets out. So if you've got all that congestion at the high school and people trying to make a left turn across people going south, it, I just see a real jam up there. It's just a thought and it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but I'm just thinking that, you know, what might help with the traffic flow.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Waggy.
Yeah, Lisa, can I just ask a clarifying question? So, so Lee Cannon suggested that we kind of sever the, the curb cut approval tonight with the final permit plan, but isn't that exactly how it's going to happen no matter what? I mean, we're, we're approving the curb cut and we're saying philosophically, we agree with, with traffic coming out here, but the, the final design, which potentially could be no left turn, could be the actual details, we will still have to approve all of that, correct?
The way I would look at this, I, I think it's kind of essential that the curb cut, everyone again can get behind saying the traffic circulation on this side should be coming in to St. Clair, ingress should be St. Clair, egress should be High School Drive. There are reasons really even for Brentwood School District to kind of stay on their schedule to get that part of approval done, that we all agree that that is where the access point, the egress point's going to be. I, I think, in my opinion, and maybe it's, it's best to talk to the, the city attorney, but I don't think this is just one shot at this. And so we still have plenty of controls we place on our local streets every day. We can change parking restrictions, we can change speed limits, we can change certainly, you know, circulation, one-way traffic flow. So again, I don't know if anyone else wants to, to weigh in, but I do kind of feel like they need to be separated. I just don't feel like it's my opinion that this is just, this tonight. And, and for reasons, I know Brent, the architect has his, his hand up and whenever it's time to go back to Brent, but there is again, reasons for getting this curb cut approval, I think, done, you know, in a reasonable amount of time here, so.
I guess the risk would be Lisa, just following up on that, is if, if we approve the curb cut and when we see the permitting and the final details and, and whatever traffic controls we can put in, if, if we can't find something that is acceptable to the Board of Alderman, then possibly then we've kind of messed up the school.
Well, we can, you know, change, change anything that we need to for, for traffic management later on because they are our local streets. This doesn't go out to a county road. I mean, eventually it does, but everything that surrounds the school, our local streets, the sidewalks are in public right of way, so.
If I may, I, I'd be happy to discuss this with the board in any environment in which you wish more, more fully. But I would remind you that the board and the city retains its police powers to regulate traffic on the city's streets, independent of any decision made with regard to roadway access points or use of the property or site design. So if we find at some point that a dangerous condition is being presented, we can make everything one-way going, you wait, going away from the building. We're going to prohibit left turns at a given intersection because we find a public safety requirement is addressed by that regulation, we can enact it. This is independent of any building or site regulations that the city has and you don't lose it. You don't lose that authority by reason of saying, we recognize the school wants to put a, the school district wants to put a school over there and they've got to have, be able to access the road system in a reasonable location. We can regulate what traffic does once it comes out that driveway.
Okay. Thank you all.
So, and, and just for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the board could go ahead and take up Resolution 1285 since, as I read it, it's limited solely to permitting the construction of the curb cuts. But then after that, the, the board can do, or the city can do whatever it wants to in terms of traffic calming measures. There, there doesn't need to be, a need at this point to separate anything. Is that correct or is, is it better to go ahead and?
No, it, there's, there's no reason, there's no need to, to, first of all, it, it, the question of imposing traffic regulations is independent of the project.
Right.
Just as if we find at the corner of First and Main, there's, there's a problem, we can enact traffic regulations affecting turning movements at the corner of First and Main anytime we want. And we can do that with respect to high school and all the other streets at any time, independent of anybody doing anything with respect to construction. So I, I, there is not a need to, excuse me, you don't have to base those regulations on anticipated conditions. You can wait after it's all constructed and people are getting used to it and six months later decide, we've got to do something and redirect traffic in a more safe way and just do it.
Okay. So if the board passes 1285, they're not waiving any, any right or relinquishing any authority to come in and modify that, that intersection at a later date?
Other than relinquishing the authority to say there can't be a curb cut at that location.
Right. Okay. We're on the same page. Okay. With that clarification, unless there's further discussion, before we do any further discussion, first I'd like to see if anybody has any, can we get a motion to approve Resolution 1285?
No move.
Second.
All right. We've got plenty of motions and seconds. But with that being the case, any further discussion on Resolution 1285? Okay. Well, with that, roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item up on the agenda is citizen comments. Anybody in the, in the public care to address the board now is the time to do so once again, and you will be given up to three minutes.
Karen has her hand raised. Karen Smith?
Karen? Go ahead and start talking. We'll let you know if we don't hear you. You're still muted, Karen.
Sorry.
No problem. There you go.
I'll try and be really, really brief, but just want to remind the board that there is a difference between high school and St. Clair. St. Clair's not really a cut street, whereas high school is, as is Harrison. Those cars are trying to avoid the lights at Litzinger and Brentwood and White and Brentwood and trying to get through quickly. There also will likely be some increased traffic in the area. Mark Twain, when they're coming over, that's a different set of parents. Also the Learning Center, although some of the parents probably have students at McGrath and the Learning Center, there's probably a, a fair amount of students going to the Learning Center right now that will not, would not have normally gone over to McGrath. So you will see some increased traffic. For the no left turn, I don't know how we would, or like not going down Harrison, I don't know how, how we would ever, ever enforce that. You know, a lot of the students that do live west, or no, east of McGrath do walk. So I'm not sure, you know, if we're being, creating issues for parents trying to get, to get into those streets after picking their kids up from school, because I don't know that very many of them drive. But I guess that would also be a concern with that. The other thing with having the cross on the south side of the street, that is where the height, the, at least on Harrison, that is where the sidewalk is. We don't have sidewalks on both sides of the street. It's only on the south side. So probably having that crosswalk on, or the pedestrian walk on that south side is, is going to be helpful. But again, when, hopefully as we study this and move this forward and try and do some traffic management, you know, that all will be better understood. I really don't like the idea of putting another stop sign on High School Drive because we have so many of them, but that is a way to force people to have to stop there. And so, and we did put one at Bridgeport and that's only going to, that's only a three-way stop. This will be a four-way stop, even though there will be times when there will be more cars coming out of there during the, you know, beginning of the day and at the end of the day, school day. They're still going to be coming through at, there with different activities with the school that are after hours and on the weekends. And then also regarding the open dialogue, I, I'm assuming the school has had lots of open dialogue, but they, I don't think they've really engaged people that don't have kids in their school. So I'm wondering if the open dialogue isn't with families with students in the school. And there are a lot of people that are in the area that will be impacted, this that don't have kids. And so I would request that, you know, both the school and the city, if there are other, as you continue to have this open dialogue, would have a way for reaching out to us other than the methods that they have been using because again, people in my neighborhood have said they have not been engaged. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Kelly, is there anybody else that you can tell?
No one else has their hand raised at this point.
Great. Okay. With that, Paul, Brent, Lee, thank you so much for your attendance. We greatly do appreciate it. And we do have the need to go into a closed session, folks, pursuant to real estate, it may be legal. So if we can get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO 610.021 subsection one and two, I'd appreciate it.
So moved into adjourned from executive session.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion to move to closed session passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Let's take a quick adjournment. You should have the, the link by now to, to enter to the closed session. We'll see in a couple of minutes. Thanks.